All right.
That's good.
I don't know.
Through the whole corporate fraud. These things take time. I said, "These things take time."
I know, I know. You were so positive about it.
Well, you know. You didn't take a photo of that one, try it.
Hi Bob.
Yeah.
Bridgette, can you hear me? So, we're good.
That didn't sound very loud. It didn't. That doesn't sound very loud, does it? Can you hear that?
I drove for the week.
Yeah, but she had her mouth on it.
I mean, way sick. I'll tell you how sick I was.
They're ready to feel up. Oh, oh, look. Chewed on it.
You're pathetic. Pathetic.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't forget to turn on your mics.
Don't forget to turn on your mics.
Check, check. Woof, woof.
The City of Andalea Council meeting will now come to order for May the first, 2017. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members, you have the minutes for these council special meeting minutes of April the 13th, the council study session minutes of April the 17th, and also the council meeting minutes of April the 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to be made? Seeing none, they'll be approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards this evening, nor do we have any public hearings, but we do have comments from interested citizens, and if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make comment, would you please come forward and state your name and address for our records?
Holly Wiggins, 660 Castle Creek Drive, and I'm here hopefully to bring the mayor down. We had a great ceremony on Arbor Day, which was last Friday, presenting a giant check to the mayor and to, what, we had three or four other folks. Candace was there, and Amber was there, and Ron was there. So, we just really had a nice time presenting a lovely check of $50,000 so that you could do a lot of work in the art park. And the purpose of the grants we presented to, the other one was to the City of Belle Fountain, is to further our Right Tree, Right Place program, which is educating communities, educating our customers at paying attention to what you plant and where you dig, and looking up and planting trees that aren't going to grow up into the power lines, either avoid the area completely, which is the safest way, or to make sure there's smaller trees or bushes, and to avoid planting in and around your electric boxes. So, it was a competitive grant process, and we really liked the fact that you were planting utility-friendly trees and that you were improving a public space for the entire community to enjoy. Last year, we ended up with our grants and with the other plantings we did, we planted over 670 utility-friendly trees. By the time these two grants are completed, and we did a presentation for some trees going into the City of Dayton this morning along Edwin C. Moses between the Art Institute and the bridge that leads you into Carolan Park, we'll have over 870 trees planted through this program over a three-year period, which we think is incredible and is a great benefit to the communities in our service territory because we all know that the tree canopy has been, you know, taken a big hit over the last couple of years. The City of Dayton commented they lost 40% of their canopy for the Emerald Ash Bower, so that's huge. So, we're pleased and excited that we got a proclamation from the mayor and we were able to present this check.
Let's see the check here.
Holly, we were so excited about being there, first of all, because everything was just so nicely presented, and here's the check that was presented to us for $50,000, which, as she's already indicated, we're going to have a great use for it. And I have to make comment about Candace Fars, our councilwoman, and also Amber Holloway and Rudy Wells, because it was said that the application was just so well-written, and it really made you understand that we not only would like to have those trees and other amenities to be added to our art park, but at the same time, we want to educate our citizens, like you said. And what do you always say? No, it's not call first. Well, that's the third thing.
Oh, call before you dig, is it?
That's the third thing, and then we'd like to make...
Pick the right tree, plant in the right spot, call before you...
I knew that there were three things that you always said, and certainly we are going to emphasize that for our residents. And as you indicated, yes, I was able to present a proclamation for you, and on that day, we did proclaim that last Friday, April the 28th, it was DPNL Plant Smart Day here in the City of Andalea. So, we do appreciate everything that you have done for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll let you take that to bank.
I understand we can take a picture of this and maybe then deposit it.
Put it on your phone.
Okay, okay, we'll try that.
All right, that's exciting. The city manager's report. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I'm pleased to announce that the city has teamed with Universal One Credit Union of Andalea to be able to again offer our Free Shred Day event, which will take place on Friday, May 19th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon in the municipal building parking lot. So, we'll have staff there from the city as well as folks from Universal One. We'll be able to help citizens unload their cars, and Universal One will also be there to distribute some information. So, again, this is always a successful event. We're looking forward to it, and we're looking forward to helping our residents out by getting rid of some of the important documents and helping shred that.
Thank you. Usually, the cars are lined up even before nine o'clock, aren't they?
That is correct, yes.
I bet so. There are no action items, nor do we have any old business, and that brings us to our ordinances, and we have an emergency ordinance. Mr. Cruzey? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we'd better read what it is first. Mr. McDonald, ordinance 17-11?
Ordinance 17-11, an ordinance authorizing a temporary advance and reimbursement between various funds of the city for expenses relating to the CDBG Concrete Repair and Resurfacing Project, together with all related pertinences thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the city has received a $50,000 Community Development Block Grant to assist in the funding of our CDBG Concrete and Resurfacing Project. Again, these funds will be reimbursed to the city once the project's complete. However, it is necessary to advance $50,000 from the general fund to the CDBG fund prior to awarding the contract. Again, once the CDBG funds have been received from the county, they will be reimbursed back to the general fund.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, and if there's someone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, move that we approve Resolution 17-11 in an emergency?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve the emergency ordinance 17-11. Are there any comments from the city council members? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. We have resolutions this evening, and the first one is Resolution 17-R-43. Mr. McDonald?
17-R-43, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Andalea Police Chapter of the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, consistent with the terms set forth in the findings and recommendations of the Fact Finder in Serb Case Number 2016 MED 080758 and 2016 MED 080759.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, a fact-finding hearing was held on Friday, April 6th, with the Ohio Patrolman Benevolence Association. They represent our police officers, our public safety specialists, and also our part-time clerk typist. The Fact Finder's report was received on April 27th. Each party must vote to accept or reject the Fact Finder's recommendation as a whole by May 4th. In order for the fact-finding report to be rejected, at least one party must have a three-fifths of its eligible members vote to reject the recommendations. And in this case, staff is recommending that council, again, accept the recommendations of the Fact Finder. The two major issues that were addressed by the Fact Finder is they... The Fact Finder recommended that for our officers that are on a 6-3 schedule, that the workday be defined as eight and a half hours, and also recommended a 2.5% cost of living increase in 2017, 2018, and 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-43.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-43. Any comments from the council members?
The only one, Your Honor, is that if we approve 17-R-43, it will obviate the need for 17-R-44, which would reject the Fact Finder's finding.
One comment, appreciate staff and all involved working with each other.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Resolution 17-R-45?
17... Sorry. 17-R-45, a resolution awarding the bid for the curb and sidewalk replacement and street resurfacing project requested by the Public Works Department to Wagner Paving, Inc., at the lowest and best bid price of $269,049.45.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, bids for curb and sidewalk repairs and street resurfacing within our CDBG area were open on April 11th, as well as bids for our citywide street resurfacing program. The budget for both resurfacing programs is $485,000. The total bids for both programs was $524,582.71, which exceeds our appropriations for the resurfacing by $39,582.71. During discussion with council at your April 17 study session, council was in concurrence to use surplus appropriations from other capital projects that have come in under budget rather than reducing the number of streets being resurfaced.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-45 as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-45 as presented. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Resolution 17-R-46, Mr. McDonald?
17-R-46, a resolution awarding the bid for the resurfacing of various streets requested by the Public Works Department to John R. Jurgensen Company at the lowest and best... Excuse me, lowest and best bid price of $255,533.26.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
I have nothing additional to add.
Okay. I didn't think so after that other explanation and everything. So, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, move that we approve Resolution 17-R-46 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-46. Comments from council? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Resolution 17-R-47, Mr. McDonald?
17-R-47, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two 2017 Ford 250 SD regular cab four-wheel-drive pickup trucks with the snowplows requested by the Public Works Department from Bowtownson Ford in the amount of $31,230 each, and declaring the two current 2005 Ford F-350 four-wheel-drive pickup trucks to be replaced as surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the Public Works Department budgeted $40,000 each for the replacement of two 2005 model pickup trucks. Bid specifications were sent to three local dealerships with Bowtownson Ford submitting the loan bid. Bowtownson's price is $894 less per truck than the state bid price.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-47.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-47. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries six to zero. Resolution 17-R-48, Mr. McDonald?
17-R-48, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Asphalt Seal Coaters of Dayton for the crack repairs and resurfacing of play courts and walkways at Jeffers Park, Helkey Park, Victory Park, and the Sports Complex in the amount of $42,477.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the 2017 budget does include $48,000 to repair cracks and resurface play courts at several facilities throughout the city. The Parks and Recreation Department is proposing to utilize the Right Way Crack Repair System for these repairs, which is recommended by the U.S. Tenants Association, and comes with a two-year warranty. Asphalt Seal Coaters of Dayton is the sole certified Right Way contractor for this region.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-48 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-48 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries six to zero. Resolution 17-R-49, Mr. McDonald?
17-R-49, a resolution awarding the bid for playground safety surface repair and recap project at Jeffers Park and the Sports Complex to Fiber Group LLC at the lowest and best bid price of $14,975.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, $19,000 is budgeted to repair and cap the port-in-place playground safety service at Jeffers Park and the Sports Complex. Five bids were received from four companies. The lowest and best bid was received from the Fiber Group.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-49 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-49 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries six to zero. Resolution 17-R-50, Mr. McDonald?
17-R-50, a resolution waiving the formal bidding requirement and authorizing payment of annual user fees associated with the required police communication devices in the amount of $14,940.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, in 2016, Andalea transitioned to the Marx system that was implemented county-wide by Montgomery County. The cost for the maintenance of this system and its towers is $20 per month per each radio on the Marx system. Again, the police department estimates its user fees for 2017 at $14,940.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
That we approve Resolution 17-R-50?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-50 as presented. Any comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. We have an ordinance in its first reading this evening, and that's 17-12. Mr. McDonald?
17-12, an ordinance amending subsection 1282.06K of the Andalea Zoning Code regarding directional and instructional signs.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, the zoning code permits directional and instructional signs in business, office, and industrial or public facility districts that do not exceed three square feet in area or three feet in height. Two directional signs per driveway are permitted. Council directed staff to review directional sign regulations of area jurisdictions to determine if Andalea's regulations were too strict. Based on the results of that survey, staff recommended that directional and instructional signs in the industrial district be increased to a maximum of six square feet in area. The height limit will remain at three feet, as well as the number of signs being two per driveway. We reviewed that information with council at your March 6th study session. There, council directed staff to propose a modification that will allow for a greater sign area if the two allotted directional signs per driveway were combined. And so, based upon that direction, staff recommended to allow two directional signs in the industrial district to be combined for a total of nine square feet, which is 75% of the combined area of both signs. The Planning Commission reviewed this modification at its April 11th meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, move that we approve Ordinance 17-12 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Ordinance 17-12 in its first reading. Any comments?
I just want to thank staff, thank Amber and the Planning Commission for working with us back and forth numerous times on this ordinance, but I think it came out quite well and solves some of our problems going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. We have an ordinance in its second reading, and that's Ordinance 17-R-09. Mr. McDonald?
17-09, an ordinance adding section 1276.35 to the Andalea Zoning Code regarding the cultivation, processing, and retail sale and distribution of medical marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, back in August of 2016, council enacted a 270-day moratorium regarding the cultivating, processing, and retail dispensing of medical marijuana. Ultimately, at council's February 20th meeting, you directed staff to prepare the necessary legislation to prohibit the cultivating, processing, or retail dispensing of medical marijuana within the city. However, this ordinance does not prohibit the legal personal use or legal possession of medical marijuana by individuals. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed zoning code amendment at its March 28th meeting and voted 4-1 to recommend approval.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will have a public hearing, and I'm opening that up so that if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 17-09 in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Ordinance 17-R-09 in its second reading. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice... Excuse me, Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. You have in your packet the boards and commission reports, and the first one is the Planning Commission Minutes of April the 11th, the Parks and Recreation Draft Minutes of April the 19th, Public Art and Andalea Draft Minutes of April the 18th, and the Andalea Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Draft Minutes of April the 18th. Comments among any of those? That brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald, anything?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Cruzey?
Just one item, Your Honor. Again, like you mentioned earlier, I'd just like to recognize Amber for her work in putting together the grant application for the DPNL Right Tree, Right Place grant that we received this evening.
Great, thank you. Councilman Herbst?
Nothing to note, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Blakeslee?
Just one, make a motion to excuse Councilman Gerhart from all meetings tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, and second by Councilman Lewis, that we do...
Excuse.
Excuse, excuse me. Excuse Councilman Gerhart from all meetings this evening. Is there a second? Oh, there is.
A second?
We need a business? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes six to zero.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Fars?
I just want to thank DPNL Foundation and for the grant, and Amber did such a great job pulling that all together and all the information. I don't think you've got to say how many trees we get, though. We get 72 trees, some boulders, some landscaped mounding areas. It's just going to make all the difference in the world to the art park, and that's kind of a flat area now, and also some wildflower areas is included in that. So, Rudy met with Amber and did a really good job of laying that out and pricing that, but if it wasn't for the DPNL Foundation, it wouldn't have happened, so thank you very much. That's all, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Well, I could say thank you again. I said, "I'll align whatsoever," because we certainly do appreciate, and...
Hasn't been on all evening then, huh? Thank you. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. I was wondering why it was so kind of quiet. That's okay. Anyway, thank you again, and come and see us when they're all in, and I know that you will, so. With that, no further business on the agenda. Meeting is adjourned. will, so. With that, no further business on the agenda. Meeting is adjourned.
He took my- He took my-